I would remind council to take your seats. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm welcome to July 9, 2014, City Council Meeting for the City of Dover. In tonight's meeting with the invocation led by Reverend Theodore Henderson, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Slavin.
Before our invocation, could we have a few moments silence for one of our own who passed on, Zachary T. Rogers? He was an 18-year-old young man who recently graduated from Dover High School last Wednesday, and unfortunately, he was killed in a car accident no fault of his own. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, our heart goes out for the family of Zachary Rogers. We ask the question, why? Rather than dwelling on why, we're grateful, dear God, for his brief time here on earth, the joy that he bought. And although that may be a small consolation to his parents and to his friends and to his loved ones, we pray that in your infinite mercy that you'll bring healing to him, healing to this community. And I pray, dear God, that you will bless this council tonight on this new day. Give them strength to work for what they have to do. Give us all, dear God, a Spirit of thanksgiving for the nation that we serve, for the instruments of our government, which this council is very much a part of. Enable us to discharge all of our duties in such a manner to bring credit to ourselves and to our nation, and reward our labors with the inner joy of doing our best in your strength. In your name we pray. Amen.
I, President of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, One Nation, Under God, Indivisible, with Liberty and Justice for All.
Thank you Reverend Henderson. Thank you Councilman Slavin. You have before you this evening's agenda. Any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight?
If not, recommend we approve as presented.
Second. Our motion by Mr. Hutchison, second by Mrs. Williams. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. They now have before us a consent agenda. Those items on the council agenda that are considered routine and non-controversial are marked with an asterisk and will be acted upon by a single roll call vote of council. No separate discussion of these items is allowed unless a member of council so requests. In which event, the matter shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. What's the pleasure of council?
Move the acceptance of the consent agenda.
Second.
Move by Mr. Slavin, second by Mr. Dixon. Any questions on the motion? The non-madam clerk call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Persa?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Mr. Bone?
Yes. Motion carries unanimous. Item two on the agenda this evening is a presentation of the Governor's Health and Community's Recognition. I would invite Mrs. Townsend, the Director of Planning and Community Development and Recreation, to join me at the podium for the presentation, and request the city clerk to read the proof into the record.
Being hereby known to all that Jack Markell, Governor of the State of Delaware, extends sincere appreciation to City of Dover, the Governor's Council on Health Promotion and Disease Prevention and the Delaware Coalition for Healthy Eating and Active Living are proud to recognize the City of Dover at the Bronze Level for the 2014 Recognition for Community Health Promotion Program. The Bronze Level recognizes significant progress to improve the overall health of respective community members. They are to be praised for their efforts to take a prevention-driven program approach to health by supporting policies and environmental changes that promote programs to improve physical activity, nutrition, healthy eating, tobacco-free lifestyles, and healthy environments, and which promote healthy lifestyles and integration of the needs of individuals with limited mobility and disabilities in neighborhoods, schools, and workplaces. Their work addresses community economic development, environmental sustainability, and neighborhood safety. Key factors in promoting healthy communities. They have demonstrated the ability to work with community-based organizations and residents to translate their vision for healthy communities into visible, concrete changes, and ultimately healthier neighborhoods, awarded this 20th day of May 2014.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It's signed by Governor Markell and Sandra Hessek, M.D. He was the Chair on the Council of Health Promotion and Disease Prevention. Henry, this is much deserved. I know what you do to promote healthy communities and healthy lifestyles.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you. If you'd like to make a comment.
I just want to say, last year, we started with honorable mention status, so now we've moved up to Bronze. We intend to keep moving up the chain. Hopefully, we skip over Silver and go right to Gold next year, but we'll see. We are working on a number of things, both in the planning and the recreation area, to continue to improving the health of our community and providing healthy alternatives for people in terms of transportation, recreation activities, and just throughout everything we do. So, thank you, and again, we'll be back next year maybe with the Gold.
Next on the item is a proclamation for Dover High School, Coming Home. I would invite Rob Kellum, Jean Thornburg, Taylor, and Alan Angel, and anyone else who would like to join me at the podium, and ask that the clerk read the proclamation into the record.
Whereas Dover High School, one Patlin Drive, has served as an educational landmark in our community since it first opened in 1965, producing over 16,000 graduates between its opening in 1965 through its last commencement in 2014. And whereas, the doors of the present Dover High School will be forever closed, and the building will soon be demolished as the community looks forward with anticipation to the completion of a new Dover High School on Route 8, which will welcome students in August 2014. And whereas, to mark this transition, an event planning team in conjunction with the Capital School District, the Dover High Alumni Association, the City of Dover, and countless sponsors is planning a four-day celebration designated as "Coming Home" at Dover High School and surrounding venues from June 12 to June 15, 2014, to allow those with a shared history and fond memories of the school to say their goodbyes. And whereas, this reunion will be commemorated by numerous events, including, among others, music on the green, a golf fundraiser to directly benefit students of the Capital School District, multi-year mini-reunion, sporting and family events, a final walk down memory lane through the halls of Dover High School, one last dance at the school, a memorial service and tribute to student, staff, and alumni who have passed, and a passing of the torch to the new generation of Dover High School students. And whereas, all of those with ties to Dover High School, as well as its precursors, which were located at the present-day Central Middle and William Henry Middle Schools, are invited to participate. Now therefore, I, David L. Bone, our Vice Mayor of the City of Dover, Delaware, do hereby proclaim June 12 through 15, 2004, as Dover High School Coming Home Weekend, and encourage former Dover High School students, staff, family, and friends to gather to renew relationships, share memories, and celebrate the rich history of Dover High School.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I know from my own aspect, graduation from high school is very special. We graduated in France, and I think there were 72 members of our graduating class. Less than half of them remain, and I think that's a product of age more than anything else. I look at the change of Dover High School with kind of a half-full, half-empty glass attitude. The new school is something that will be around for generations and generations to come. Your participation in this and the event, "Coming Home," is invaluable, and I know when we're all long gone and forgotten, some of the children and their children, who will be attending high school there and who will be bearing the young of the future of our community, will certainly recognize and remember what you all have done to help the high school. Thank you all very much. We know who gets what. You make sure they get the right names.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you all. Alan, if you'd like to make a comment, that's fine. On behalf of the whole group, it'd be good.
Well, first of all, Tracy McDowell, my neighbor and former graduate of Dover High School, what a great way to have somebody read this into the record on our behalf. As you know, Dover High School, we all bleed blue and white. That's the final call for Dover High. And all I can say is, when the school goes down, the only thing left will be the memories until we're gone. And then, in future years, if this has to partake again, I think all of us are going to say, we're out of this one. So, this has been a job, and we're happy we've done it, and we're looking forward to everybody coming home and having a good time, and hoping the school will go down with a lot of respect, with the memories that we hold dearly. And we thank you very much for this honor.
Thank you, Alan. As a commissioner and friend, I really want to thank you all for your participation, and it's very nice what you've done. It's, you know, we get to see a new high school very often, and I'm really excited about seeing this getting completed and off the ground. It'd be wonderful to go to a football game out there and attend some athletic and cultural events out there. Looking very, very important. Councilman Hutchison.
Well, I am a graduate of Dover High School 53 years ago this year, and certainly to each and every one of you who have worked so hard to put this event together, I thank you, each and every one of you. When I look at the past history, I was talking to a gentleman just the other day, and he was in the class of 1946, and he said this, that his class was the one who named the Dover High School Senators. His class was also the one who named colors for Dover High School, blue and white. So, there's a lot of history. So, I thank each and every one of you. You look at 16,000 people that have graduated from Dover High School, and look what they've done with their lives. High school was about building a foundation, and they certainly have done it and done it well. And I thank each and every one of you for your support and help in putting this event together. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Hutchison. Mr. Lynn?
Thank you. I just want to recognize Robbie Kellum. Rob, if anyone is subscribed to his Facebook page, just knows how much effort he's put into this. I think we get a Facebook page update every 15 minutes. The amount of work that you and your entire group and Jean Thornburg have put into this is just outstanding. And you have done, your classmates and everyone before and after you, a great service. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to make their comment? Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. We appreciate it, and we look forward to it. Item number three on the agenda this evening is a proclamation noting Flag Day and Flag Week. I would request the city clerk to read the proclamation into the record.
Whereas, the first official flag of the United States was adopted by the Second Constitutional Congress on June 14, 1777, and on August 3, 1949, Congress designated June 14 of each year as National Flag Day, and requested that the President issue an annual proclamation calling for its observance. And whereas, on June 9, 1966, Congress requested that the President designate the week in which June 14 occurs as National Flag Week, and call upon citizens to display the flag during that week. And whereas, on December 8, 1982, the National Flag Day Foundation was chartered to conduct educational programs and to encourage all Americans to pause for the Pledge of Allegiance on Flag Day. And whereas, Flag Day celebrates our nation's symbol of unity, devotion to freedom, and the equal rights of all. Now therefore, I, David L. Bonear, Vice Mayor of the City of Dover, Delaware, do hereby proclaim June 14, 2014, as Flag Day, and the week of June 8 through 14, 2014, as Flag Week in the City of Dover, and urge all residents to pause for the Pledge of Allegiance in honor of the flag of the United States of America, and to proudly display the flag in recognition of the beacon of hope that it has become for our country and for people all over the world.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number four is a public hearing on the Electric Revenue Fund Budget. A public hearing on the Electric Revenue Fund Budget is required for compliance with the City of Dover Electric Revenue Bond Resolution prior to the adoption of the budget. Notice that the public hearing was properly advertised for tonight in this time and place. Mrs. Mitchell.
Yes. In your packet is the amount of the budget for the Electric Revenue Fund revenues and beginning balance total $89,560,000. And expenses for the Electric Revenue Fund in end in budget balance total $89,560,000. The Improvement Extension Fund, which is the Capital Project Fund, has receipts in beginning balance of $8387,000, and the expenses in budget balance total $8387,000.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. John. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I will declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of the Electric Revenue Fund Budget? If so, come forward and speak your name and address for the record. Anyone who would like to speak in favor of the Electric Revenue Budget? Seeing none, is there anyone who would like to speak against the Electric Revenue Fund Budget? If so, come forward, speak your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. I would remind you, there is no action at this time. The first reading of the proposed ordinance is scheduled to take place during the latter part of the meeting this evening. Final reading and adoption is scheduled for the meeting of June 23. Item number nine on the agenda this evening is the next item that was not on the consent agenda, but has the evaluation of bids for the Dover Park Recreation Center demolition. Mrs. Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. President. You have before you an action form that includes the bid tabulation for the demolition of the former Recreation Center building at Dover Park. We received two responsive bids, and they are listed on your council action form. In addition to the demolition itself, there is the cost of asbestos abatement that will come in at $12,995, which was bid by Compliance Environmental, the city's environmental contractor. And we are anticipating that the cost incurred to Compliance Environmental would be approximately $8,000. We get billed by them on an hourly basis, so they're responsible for the oversight of the asbestos abatement. They did some review of the bid specifications. So, the total cost of the demolition, inclusive of the Compliance Environmental estimate and the asbestos abatement, would be $56,595. Staff is recommending, the council authorized staff to award the demolition contract to Delaware Mulch and Stone in the amount of $35,600.
Thank you, Mrs. Townsend. Any questions of staff? Seeing none. What's the pleasure of council?
Move for staff, move for some staff recommendation.
Second.
Move by Mr. Hare, second by Mr. Hutchison. Any questions on the motion? Mr. Lynn?
I will not be voting in support of this agenda item, insofar as I'm still not convinced of the necessity to demolish the Dover Park Recreation Building. The Recreation Needs Assessment still is not completed. We've earmarked certain funds and additional funds in this evening's budget for what is to come at that site, but we still don't know whether that site can be used for the basis of a new building, whether the foundation or any part of that old building can be used in the new building. I still don't think we have sufficient answers to any of those questions, and consequently, as I have on all items related to this, will not be voting in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I actually had a little statement that was prepared, but I think he said it all, so I'll just say ditto.
Wise words of a politician. Any further questions or comments before we vote? Seeing none? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
No.
Mr. Dixon?
No.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Persa?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
No.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Mr. Bonear?
No. Motion fails. Next on the agenda this evening is item number 10, Evaluation of Proposals for the System Control and Data Acquisition SCADA Maintenance Contract. Mr. Koenig.
Thank you, Mr. President. In the packet is a one-page action form regarding our system control and data acquisition, our SCADA system for the wastewater pumping stations. We have, at various times throughout a number of years, used contract labor to help us assist with repairs, upgrades, or any type of servicing of the system. The action form identifies the spending that we've done in a number of fiscal years prior to this year. We did place an advertisement for proposals. We received two submissions. Based on the evaluation by staff of those submissions, we are requesting the award of a three-year contract to Donovan Contractual Services for the proposal submitted in response to RFP number 14-0040PW. This is a minimum of a monthly retainer with an hourly rate of $50 per hour for service. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Koenig? Seeing none, pleasure of council. Mrs. Williams?
I move to approve.
Second.
Move by Mrs. Williams, second by Mr. Anderson. Any questions on the motion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Persa?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Mr. Bonear?
Yes. Motion carries unanimous. Item number 12A on the agenda is the First Reading of Proposed Ordinances. The First Reading of Proposed Ordinance 2014-16, which has been referred to us by the Legislative Finance and Administration Committee, final action by council takes place during the second reading of the ordinance, June 23, 2014. Copies of all proposed ordinances are available at the entrance to council chambers or can be obtained from the city clerk's office. Councilman Anderson, I request you brief us on the matter.
Thank you, Mr. President. This particular provision is taking the economic incentives which have been very effective in bringing businesses and reclaiming some of the empty box stores and storefronts, and also helping businesses that have long invested in this community have the opportunity to expand. It's also helped with the college, I believe, Bay Health. I mean, it's been part and parcel of the renaissance that we're starting to see in Dover. For the fact of economic certainty and the fact that these incentives have brought more money in than before they were in place, it makes sense to extend them for a finite period of time, and that time being another three years. That'll be enough for economic certainty, but yet it gives our economic development team enough leverage to say, don't wait forever. We know that we have it now. We may not have it then. So, let's give our businesses the economic certainty they need, and let's continue the provision which gives a discount on the impact fees and the business permit fees if you expand your business and create jobs or reclaim empty and vacant buildings in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Any questions from members of council?
Question.
Mr. Hare.
What is our Economic Development Office doing to entice people to come to Dover? Other than companies like Cashew Nuts or whatever they are?
I think, now, while, let me say, while I answer this, this is, of course, separate and apart from the policy issue, which is, of course, our job. The Economic Development Office has actually done a fair amount. They've taken, of course, obviously, you see at the Garrison Track, some elements. You see some of the old Walmart, the Redners, some of the, if the Family Dollar is coming downtown, as well as they've worked for different grants with the state, and now tax incentives with the federal government, with the addition of a nonprofit organization, something we've been advocating for a while, to revive the nonprofits, to allow us to get additional grants. The Economic Development Office has had many different benchmarks which are in the various reports, and I think it would be a good thing to have them come and do their quarterly reports, because I think it's important that you get to see each and every step that they're taking. They do, each month, they have certain goals which they, you know, document and they keep, which include business contacts with every large employer, as well as... which include business contacts with every large employer, as well as meeting with the local merchants, and not, because it's not just about bringing business in, as important as that is, but it's about taking care of the businesses that already care enough to invest in our community.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Mr. Hutchison.
You certainly made a good point there. I think it's extremely important to keep in mind that a part of what the Economic Development Office does is go out to meet with major corporations and leaders within the community, working with Kent County Levy Court, working with the State of Delaware Economic Development Office, and it's an ongoing process. And one of the most important things about economic development is about keeping the jobs we already have. Sometimes, looking for new opportunity is always a plus, but keeping the jobs you already have, and a lot of times, especially if you look at Kraft Foods and some of your major manufacturing, you go to them, and it's not about, a lot of times, it's just about expanding their operations. So, there's a lot of work that is done on a regular basis, and I certainly think that we need to be very happy about the economic development.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchison. Any other questions or comments by members of council? Thank you. I would also add to Mr. Anderson's comments. There are, as a direct result of the involvement of the Economic Development Office, somewhere in the neighborhood of 400 to 500 jobs that are now occurring in the city of Dover the month before we established this operation. There is in excess of a half a billion dollars in economic development construction going on in and around the city of Dover, and it's directly as an involvement of the economic development. People work for the city in the partnership. We have 80 people working downtown on Lockerman Street, which we didn't have two years ago. That is a direct result of the impact of the Economic Development Office and the Downtown Dover Partnership. So, those are the question. The number of jobs and the benefits and the improvements that are going on in the Dover area need only to look around what's happening in the city. Granted, we've lost a couple of big box stores, but that doesn't mean we can't refill them. And I can assure you, there are ongoing efforts to do even better things than we see going on right now, and I think they'll be very happy when that takes place. If there are no further questions or amendments, I will now defer to the city clerk for the introduction of the ordinance. The ordinance was section 1-9 of the Dover Code. Madam Clerk.
Proposed ordinance number 2014-16, amending appendix E, commercial and industrial building redevelopment, is constituted as the first reading.
I would remind council, there is no action needed at this time. We now have before us item number 12B, the first reading of proposed ordinance 2014-17. Final action by council will take place during the second reading of the ordinance on June 23rd, 2014. Copies of all proposed ordinances are available at the entrance to the council chambers and can be obtained from the city clerk's office. Mr. Koenig.
Thank you, Council President Bonar. In the packet is ordinance 2014-17. It's a 25-page ordinance that identifies the proposed spending plan as marked up from the past four budget sessions. Okay. So, the 25-page ordinance is the first reading of the budget markup from the past, I believe, four budget meetings, where council spent over 10 hours, I believe, debating various components of the general fund, the water wastewater fund, and the electric fund. Tonight, what is being introduced is roughly $136.87 million spending plan for the general fund, the water wastewater fund, the electric fund, and all other associated spending. The primary components of the motions passed at the June 5 budget hearing, I'm going to go through them very quickly. There were motions made to eliminate training and conferences for the mayor and council. Those additions or those alterations have been incorporated. There was a motion regarding the transfer of streetlight expenses to the electric fund. That request has been incorporated into the draft document. There were motions to reduce one police car, one police motorcycle, as well as a one Ford Explorer for the emergency management coordinator out of the city manager's office. Those alterations have been made. We are proposing to change a storekeeper to permanent part-time in the inventory and procurement area, transferring credit card fees from the customer service area to the electric fund. There's an increase in the contribution of $10,000 to the DDP. This equates to a $70,000 total contribution to the Downtown Dover Partnership. There was a motion to increase the rate stabilization transfer or transfer to the general fund. The original transfer was 8 million. There was a second motion to add $1.5 million to that transfer. The motion or the budget ordinance reflects that motion. There were some additional internal service fund allocations, as well as a request to transfer an additional $100,000 to the Parkland Reserve to address components that may come out of the recreation study. There were proposals for non-bargaining raises at 3%, excluding the city manager for a multiple of funds affecting the general, as well as water wastewater and electric funds. All of those motions have been incorporated into the ordinance, as I said, for a total spending of roughly $136,878,000. And I would be happy to answer any questions based upon that draft ordinance.
Mr. Herr.
I just have a question in light of the vote this evening. How can we appropriate $100,000 for Guado Recreation Center when, as was stated earlier, we have no recommendations? We don't even know what's going to happen over there now. So, how can we say, "Well, we need this," or "We need that"? I mean, I think we need to wait. Don't we need to wait until we, as Mr. Lynn said, till we get some report, some recommendation? Then might come back and say, "We only need 50,000," or "We need 300,000," who knows? You know, I thought we were going to tear the building down and then put something up there functional, but obviously, nobody wants to do that. So, what are we putting 100,000 in there for that we don't know what we're going to spend it on?
That was the motion that was made at the hearing, so that's how the ordinance was prepared, and the assumption coming in tonight was we would move forward with the demolition of the old building. There was $80,000 in the original draft budget per a motion by council earlier in the year. At the last budget hearing, there was an additional motion that would put the additional $100,000 in the Parkland Reserve. The 80 is actually in the general fund, CIP, capital improvement project account. The Parkland Reserve is a different account, so it would be separated from that original $80,000 that was put in the budget.
Reserve, reserve, whatever. It's 180,000 then, but do we really need to put in there if we don't know what's happening there? Recommendation might be leave the building up.
That's up to council.
I mean, I'm just going by what was said this evening. I wouldn't appropriate the money without knowing what's happening.
Thank you, Mr. Herr. Mr. Hutchison and Mr. Slaven.
Well, currently, there is a study underway and should be done and completed by the end of the year to determine exactly what the needs are for recreation, and that will not be done until the end of the year.
Thank you, Councilman Hutchison. Mr. Slaven.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to confirm that the budget, I know we're not voting on this budget tonight, obviously, the adoption is in two weeks, but I think it's apropos to make some comments now. The budget that's going to be before us, in these ordinances, can you just confirm, either Mrs. Mitchell or Mr. Koenig, that it will spend more, there's more expense in the general fund in fiscal 15 than there was in fiscal 14?
Yes.
Is this, which one? I mean, this one?
No.
Councilman Slaven, the FY 15 spending plan for the general fund is proposed at The FY 14 spending plan was $36,833,500 for an increase, according to this, of $2,250,800 in the general fund.
Thank you. And for the water wastewater fund? And the electric fund?
Oh, wait. This is the council revised budget. I'm sorry. I'm reading off the original submission. The council revised budget, the budget that we've proposed for tonight in the ordinance, general fund, $38,169,400. Fiscal year 14 was $36,833,500 changes, an increase of $1,335,900.
And then the expenses in the water wastewater fund for fiscal 15 versus fiscal 14?
Fiscal 15 proposed at $13,669,300. Fiscal year 14, $13,268,700. That's an increase of $400,600 for the water wastewater fund.
And then the electric fund?
Electric fund, fiscal year 15 spending, $82,574,900. Fiscal year 14 spending, $81,176,100 for an increase of $1,398,800.
Thank you, Mr. Koenig. I just wanted to illustrate that this budget that we're proposing, and let me begin by saying, I appreciate the effort that we all put into this budget, staff especially, but also my colleagues here, and I think we worked hard, and we got to a budget that, unfortunately, I'm going to apologize and say, I just don't have any confidence that this budget's going to work. I believe that if our only success measure in this budget was to avoid a property tax increase, then we can declare victory and we can start the parade in our name, but that's not our only responsibility. This isn't an example of a tax and spend budget, this is a spend and spend budget. We're up almost a little over $3 million in expenditures. The budget spends more money than last year's. It puts more people on the payroll. Granted, just one more FTA, but that number keeps climbing. It provides pay raises for approximately 90% of our workforce, and the 10% that's not getting pay raises are going to come in with a contract during fiscal 15 for which there's no money budgeted for it. Okay? It has no provision for that. I believe it violates, this budget violates, some of our own practices and policies about the electric reserve transfers, because that's becoming more and more a revenue source for our general fund, and the budget, as many of you know, runs afoul or appears to run afoul of bond covenants and may likely be illegal if we transfer the costs of the streetlights to the electric fund. You know, I know we all had heartburn over the reserve issue and how much money we have in reserves, and isn't that our rainy day fund? And I would say, yes, it is, but in all honesty, it's been raining for about nine years now. All right? Been raining every day for about nine years in this economy, and it's time for us to really look at, take a hard look at, doing something different. If you're asking me what the answer is, I'm going to be candid and tell you, I don't know. I don't think we got to the important questions that we needed to get to, like what kind of government do we need to structure ourselves and engineer ourselves to be for the 21st century? And those are very important questions that we're going to have to find some time to answer, but this path that we're on is unsustainable. There will be a crash coming when we no longer have reserves to bail us out, and we have not adjusted the property tax to keep pace with our expenses. Thank you for the time, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Slaven. Any other members of council have a comment? Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think the part of having a reserve fund such as the Parkland Reserve is exactly that. It is not choosing to spend the money, it is to reserve the money, so that when that decision is made, there's actually money budgeted to do so. We are talking about enough money to maybe do something, but not even enough to, if you look at the CIP that we've been putting off time and time again, you're talking about money for maybe one of those projects that we've been talking about the last five years. That is, for instance, you look at, we've had onboard the skate park, we've had onboard splash pads, we have onboard, we're talking about items of indoor recreation in the east of Dover. To say that $100,000 being prudently put in savings isn't enough would be reasonable. To say that it shouldn't be done, what's, I think that would be unwise. I think it's time that we start planning for the future and the recreation needs that almost everyone in the city says we have. It is very important to keep that, and if we, for some reason, decide we don't need to spend it, there's, quite frankly, there's just another way, we can just give it back. I mean, I never have any objection to that. I think the budget is an important one, because this budget has protected the taxpayers. The money in the rate stabilization fund is, quite frankly, the people's money. It is overfunded by double what it should be, and this council, some years ago, was disturbed. Before our time in council, anyone inside of the aisle, but some of the good council people over there will remember, because you participated in these discussions in one office or another, where the rate stabilization fund was collecting money, collecting money, and council established a policy to give that money, some of that money back and set a limit. We have been exceeding those limits for a while now, and it has doubled the limit to take one and a half million dollars of that and not have a tax increase at this time, it's just giving some of that money back. It makes imminent sense. You know, we have to give it back one way or another, and that's important. So, let's just have our reading, advance it. If somebody has a better idea, you have two weeks to have amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Mr. Slaven.
I thought Mr. Perza was handling it.
No, I'm sorry, Mr. Perza, I didn't see your hand.
Just say, I think on this instant time-
Speak into your microphone, please. Thank you.
I think in this instance, I would agree with Mr. Slaven, which is probably a different position for me to be in in most cases, but I agree that there are significant hurdles that we're going to be facing with the budget in the next several years. It's going to be difficult for me to support the budget in its current form. I would agree with some elements of the, it's okay to tap into our reserve funds, but to me, you do so for necessary needs and not for recreational needs. We've got significant budget hurdles to address in the next couple of years, and if we are going to tap into reserve funds, whether it's to avoid a tax increase because we need capital, I'm okay with that. I don't have a problem with rating the savings account for that reason, but keep it to the bare minimum of what we need to spend our money on, is whether we're talking about splash parks and skateboard parks and all these type of things, they don't address our core, they're important for purposes of social and recreational needs, but we have core infrastructure needs to address, that when you weigh all the various important projects, I think splash parks and pools and whatever those things are, those are secondary concerns, where we have, you know, water towers and, you know, the electric fund and the sewer system, and I think those are important needs at this point to address. And I'm real hesitant on taking savings that we've accumulated when those needs are priority needs, not these secondary needs. And I think there's an appearance that we're going to be on a spending spree with money we don't have. It's our reserve funds. If we're going to use it to balance the budget, use it to balance the budget, because I think there are people who are watching, who are very concerned with the level of taxation they have. I don't think it's fair for us to say that, you know, we're only looking at 5% or 2%. To somebody who's on a fixed income or who is living on a budget, that's important to those people, and those are the people that are at least reaching out and contacting me with that concern. So, I don't have a problem necessarily with reaching into our savings account, but I think we need to be very careful that we don't overextend ourselves on recreational needs at this point. So, I think, for different reasons, but I think I agree with Mr. Slaven on the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Perza. Mr. Slaven.
Thank you. I just wanted to respond to Councilman Anderson's comments and take this in the spirit of the colleagues that we are. colleagues that we are. The previous use of the electric reserve fund, when it was used, was used to reduce the electric rates. That was the reason the money was saved. And it went right back to the right rate payers. And that's what was done by previous council, and I believe Mrs. Williams was on the council with me at that time. To say that we're giving money back to people by spending $3 million more dollars this year than we spent last year and using that reserve fund is just a leap in logic that I can't follow on that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slavin. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Slavin. I would point out that you're talking about approximately $1 million more, which is money going to the streets, going to, replacing critical equipment for the police department. Not, I mean, that's what we're talking about that money going for, as well as taking and the union contracts that we negotiated, which included a number of give backs. That has actually kept personnel costs stable and it helps to bend the long-run curve of our cost, which is essential to the long-term well-being of the city. In negotiations, you have to give something. And we gave a very small amount. So I look at this particular budget and I think overall it's a positive. Is it a perfect budget? No. Is it a, but we're going to have to look and evaluate over the next several years once we get new, once, quite frankly, new buildings, new plants, once we consider and evaluate the growth that's come into the city and then evaluate what the tax rate should be. At this current time, with this current economy, I think that changing the tax rate makes it less attractive as a city for jobs. And I think it is an unwise thing to do. Because the money that you are talking about increasing, increasing money that in our water infrastructure to replace critical plants, parts of those, whether it's a new well or whether it's new, replacing substations, it's essential and that money is covered and paid for within that enterprise fund. It's not tapping into reserves, but it's covered within that enterprise fund. So that fund stands by itself. I think that's the responsible way to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Mr. Hutcherson, then Mr. Slavin.
A question to the city manager, as you look at the proposed budget as presented, are you happy and satisfied with the fact that looking at the underground infrastructures, the roads and the electric lines, water lines, sewer signs and all the capital projects and the buildings that currently are, and some of them are in desperate need of improvement and upgrades? Do you have the necessary funds to continue to address those issues in this budget?
The FY15 budget included a significant increase in the street program. So we have a baseline funding level for the street program, the water replacement program, water line replacement program, and the INI programs, provided that the budget is adopted. In addition, I think we are on track with our renewals and replacement in the general fund. So from an infrastructure standpoint, with streets, water, sewer, and electric, we're on track. What this budget does not include is any discussion at the moment about major improvements to City Hall, 5 East Reed Street, remodeling of the old library if we were to keep it, replacement of the warehouse facility or any of our warehousing yards. So there are some significant building projects that are on the horizon for us that will begin to show up in future budgets that are currently not addressed in the five-year capital plan. The issue really that we've been discussing for quite some time now is the structural stability of the general fund and how do we fund the general fund operations? We, in my mind, do not have difficulty funding our electric improvement and extension of the electric capital plan. We have come a long ways to funding the water and sewer capital plan. Our issue is in the general fund. And this budget discussion over the last two or three weeks has really indicated that our problem is consistently related to the general fund. So without a tax increase, we did not address the baseline funding in the general fund. And the proposed transfers, at least at this point, are one-time transfers as far as I can tell. So we'll have that issue to deal with as we move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Slavin.
Just to follow up, Congressman-
Go ahead.
I'd just like to echo Councilman Slavin's comments. I think that he certainly gave a strong overview of where we are and the needs and concerns about the future. So we all need to keep that in mind.
Thank you, Mr. Slavin.
Thank you. I just wanted to confirm also, Mr. Mitchell, this budget that's proposed, is there a projected surplus at the end of the year in this budget?
And for the general fund or for all?
For all.
Projected surplus in budget balance or in any reserves or anything, or is that what you're asking?
No. Wasn't there an issue that there was money that was unprogrammed at the end, in the general fund?
All the funds.
And where I'm going is, we're transferring $1 million into, from the electric reserve, right? And that's the point that Councilman Anderson said that it's going to paying roads and all this other stuff. But the fact is, we're transferring that in, we're putting $100,000 into a Parkland Reserve, and I think-
Yes, we did have-
Money left that was accounted for.
Yes, yes.
Do you recall what that number was?
Let me see.
You know what? If you don't have it, that's fine. I don't want to belabor this point.
A couple hundred thousand roughly.
Well, it had $181,500 of expenses that are less than revenue. So it was a surplus of 181.5.
181.5. And just, Councilman Anderson, I agree with you on the tax increase issue. We'll agree on that. I would not have supported the tax increase as it was presented because it included so many additional expenditures. But we'll, I guess, agree to disagree on the balance of it. So, thank you.
Mr. Dixon?
The, when do we take time to do something for our children in our communities? The west side has been a problem. There's no recreation over there for them. We decided to put the $100,000 in there as a reserve. We don't know what it's going to cost. $80,000 was not really anything to do to get that building back up. Even to tear it down, it costs you $56,000. So we, at the time now, that the people want something done over there. We have a study going on and we should get that study done and stop giving the promise, 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 and not having the money to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. I would remind my colleagues that you're free to make an amendment tonight if you wish to this budget, or you can certainly do it prior to next council meeting when we vote on the budget. So anytime you want to make an amendment, you're certainly welcome to do so. Mr. Hare?
I'm going to go back to the same thing on the rec center. I don't have a problem with the money being in there, but I guess in our wisdom, we'll do what we've always done, like when we reassess and spend like we did a few years back, spend millions of dollars to make nothing. But we'll continue with the rec center and we won't tear it down. And then at the end of the year, the price will be more because now we're going into the next year. So let's wait, let's wait to tear the building down so it'll cost us more. Because it doesn't take a rocket scientist, if you've been over there, to see that that building is not going to be usable. I mean, if you're going to, like I've said before, if you're going to put something up there, put something up there that the kids will use, whether it be a small type building, a small shooty park where they can go in and play basketball, they can run around or whatever, or maybe the kids will say, we don't want that. We'd rather have a splash park or a skate park or something over there. But putting off tearing the building down doesn't, I mean, in my opinion, doesn't make much sense. As far as the electric transfer, I mean, we were told if we didn't do it, we could raise the taxes and then they'd get the money back in a cheaper electric rate. So it's smoke and mirrors. So what's the difference? Either way, we weren't going to be, technically, we didn't do anything different than what was proposed. We just did the money differently. The carryforward, like, I think what I wanted to know is how much carryforward is projected from the 14 budget. Evidently, there was $550,000 we took from the carryforward of the 13 budget, which was said we had to pay back. And from what the papers I saw the other night, it said there was almost $13 million carryforward from this budget that goes somewhere. Because again, I said, here, pay me this much money, but I don't need all that. Next year, you're going to pay me more, but I don't need all that either. So it's cities, it's a city, the citizens' money. So what's different, what fund it's in? And I know we're going to say, well, bond council, bond council this and bond council that. Well, bond council doesn't live here. You know, they're not paying any of the bills. So like I said, I just, I just still think that the rec center needs to go down and the money that's there, we need to decide what needs to be done there for the people over there. That building that's there, like I said, is not functional. We've been told that. Mr. Dixon's committee even recommended tearing it down.
Thank you. Mrs. Williams, then Mr. Lynn.
Reverend Dixon, as a matter of fact, the children haven't been in that building for a long time because of the health issues with the black mold. Our organization in partnership with Dover Housing Authority has been doing after-school and summer programs in there for five years now in a safe environment in Manchester at the community center there. There are programs available for the kids. They are not as specified as they are on the west side. However, we started a program, a basketball program called Hot Shots. And it was so successful that one of the things we did was we took school buses and placed supervisors on the school buses so the kids would be safe. And we brought kids from the east side over and they're attending. The grant we got from the Criminal Justice Council was for 30 children. To date, we've done 127 kids and we haven't even gone through the last third of the program. So yes, there is a need. Where it needs to be, it's not in that building. No kid needs to be exposed to black mold.
Thank you. Mr. Lynn?
Just briefly, it doesn't sound as if there's unanimity with regard to the newest iteration of the budget. And I'd ask the city clerk and perhaps in conjunction with the city solicitor, whether it will be appropriate after the first reading to schedule another series of budget hearings to perhaps address the issues. Because it doesn't sound like the votes are there to vote into the newest budget. I am somewhat disappointed that those individuals who are the most vocal against the latest iteration of the budget are also the sodium individuals that didn't make any motions and didn't have any ideas relative to it. But casting blame is not going to get us anywhere at this point. And I would ask, and would ask my colleagues to support me in perhaps scheduling another week of budget hearings between now and the next reading of the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Mr. Persa?
Just my comment, and I guess in regards to your own comment about making modifications tonight, is I think at this point, the current form of the budget, I guess version two, has only been up for a couple of days. I think we got through it Thursday. We're not, people are still reacting to the first version of the budget.
Right.
And I think, I think everybody's got ideas on how they tweak it, but my preference is, and I don't mind doing the additional meetings, but I think we've got to get some catch-up for, as people understand what's in the new version versus what was in the old version, to get some feedback from the actual people who've got to deal with the budget. So I'm not opposed to having more follow, what Mr. Lynn suggested, but maybe allow a little time for people to actually read it, get an understanding of what's in it in comparison to what was in the first version of it. Because I think once people realize what's in the second version, that's going to prompt different questions than what we heard the first time.
I think that's sage counsel.
Before we make a switcheroo tonight and do a third version, before anybody's even aware of what was in the second version.
I agree. But I would also remind my colleagues that you are, if you have ideas for amendments, you may present them tonight, if you have been thinking about them. This is certainly an opportunity for you to make those amendments. This is what the first reading is for, so that you have an opportunity to make amendments if you are dissatisfied with something that was put into the budget. As for scheduling another whole series of budget discussions, I will tell you that I think you can take care of it with amendments. And with a little thought and reading of the budget, I think that you can accomplish that. And I think that's how we should accomplish that. Mr. Koenig brought us a budget with a 7.22% tax increase, I think, if that is what that would, and we decided to do otherwise. I can only speak from my standpoint, but I will tell you this, I have not heard one single comment against having a tax increase. We've known that we've had to have a tax increase for this city ever since I've been on council, and I suspect going back even further than that. But we have had the ability to transfer money from the reserves and help balance the budget. And I think it's incumbent on us to maintain the level of services. And I will respond to, you know, earlier comments about economic development. You know, the city that stagnates dies. I mean, it's as simple as that. If you sit around here and we allow our infrastructure to deteriorate and we don't progress and we don't provide adequate services for this city and we don't encourage economic development, we're going to end up like some other small towns that have just turned to dust and become ghost towns. We have a robust economy here, thanks to the military. We have some splendid major corporations that are located in this city. And I'll be doggone, if I'm not going to work my tail off for the remainder of time that I have on council, to make sure we have something even better than what we have here. And we ought to all be doing that. Every single one of us. Not just for what you think our particular interests might be, but as a city as a whole, this is what this city, we ought to be outselling this city every opportunity that we get and beg borrowing and stealing from any place we can find to bring economic development to this city. I believe it's that important. I believe that there's nothing better, a better legacy that we can leave as members of the council, and I consider us a family. And we argue and we fight amongst one another, but at the end of the day, every one of us is sitting here with the best interest of the city at heart. And I think each of us needs to go out and look at this aspect of amending this budget the way we feel it should be amended and move on and pass it on the 23rd like it's supposed to be done. Mr. Hare, you had your hand up.
I think it was first.
Mr. Lynn?
It was first. Just briefly, Council President Bonard asked that you allow me to change your mind on this one. And that's, the problem with just allowing us to address this in amendments at the next council meeting means that FOIA will preclude us from really having a meaningful dialogue amongst one another. As many people have pointed out, voicing their frustrations about FOIA is that it will preclude a dialogue, it will preclude brainstorming. So what I would suggest is that at least one special meeting between now and the next city council meeting so that we can collectively try to come up with some other ideas so that perhaps there's more unanimity amongst all of our colleagues. With that, I would actually make a motion that we schedule a special meeting, which I believe is our, within our prerogative to do. So accordingly, I would make a motion to schedule a special meeting to discuss the budget and possible budget amendments.
A motion by Mr. Lynn, second one by Mr. Dixon. And any questions on the motion? Mr. Hare?
I just want to say that I don't have a problem with the way the budget was done. I don't, I don't know that there needs to be anything. My problem that I have tonight is there's been, two times, recommended that we tear down the White Oak Farm, White Oak Rec Center to, and do a study and then put up there what the study comes back and recommends now. And then when it comes time to vote on the recommendation, it was passed before to do that. They got all the work done to tear it down, the cost, and then the people that recommended it vote against it. I mean, I don't know that having more budget hearings is going to do anything other than make everybody come up with other stuff. I mean, I just, I just, you know. I mean, I just, I just, you know. You recommend something, then you vote against it. I just, this.
Thanks, Mr. Hare. Mr. Slavin?
Thank you. My comments earlier this evening weren't designed to undo the budget. They weren't designed to have us take another bite out of the apple. They were my observations and my kind of backup to you all as to why I wasn't supporting it. That's what it was. It was my observation, and that's why I raised it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Anderson, then Mr. Persa.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I personally believe that we should move forward with the budget. I think we made good decisions. I don't see anything that's changed those decisions. And I don't see any reason why, quite frankly, we've had several nights, we had 10 hours of budget hearings, and I don't see, I don't have any reason to change anything. So I'm open to hearing some amendments, but as it is, I support the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Mr. Persa?
Just kind of follow up as.
Microphone, sir.
I think we're better off now than we were two, three weeks ago. I think we're getting down to the point of looking at details, and that's what we're discussing at this point. I think it's likely that there'll be additional budget amendments. Maybe it's necessary to have an additional meeting yet, but I think we're getting closer. But whether we have a specific meeting or not can depend on what kind of feedback we get from everybody else in the community first.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments or questions? After no other questions or comments and seeing no proposed amendments, I now defer to the city clerk for introduction of the ordinance in accordance.
Oh, we have a motion on the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Mr. Lynn, I apologize.
It's okay.
Mr. Lynn's motion was to explore the dates, and Mr. Dixon, I believe, seconded to have an additional budget workshop. And, so we will need, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote on that, if you don't mind, sir. Any questions on his motion? Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
No.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
What's the day of the meeting? Is it just the Habe meeting, or is it a non-specific date?
Wednesday. It'll be Wednesday evening.
Two days from now, or next Wednesday?
Two days from now.
I can't do it. No.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
No.
Mr. Hare?
No.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes. Motion carries 5-4. We'll have a meeting Wednesday evening at 6:00. I make it 6:30, I'm sorry.
That is the only date this month?
Well, make a determination that will be the start. We have to meet on the next night. I would remind everybody that's a city-counting meeting the next night. But we'll talk about it if we need.
I was just thinking, sir, that, you know, I would have voted yes if I'd had better, I have a commitment that I don't know that I can break, because it's medical. So is there any way we can get a little bit more notice in this?
I think we can. I think there are other commitments. I've got commitments, all of them next week.
Do it tomorrow night.
And we can do it tomorrow night if you want.
People have time for amendments.
You've got 24 hours notice, that's the problem. But Wednesday night it is. And I would remind you that if you have any amendments that you want to bring in, bring them in with you so that we can get this done and taken care of. All right, Mr. Lynn?
Just another request along those lines, Mr. President, and that's if there are questions, if we could get them into Donna and Scott or any other staff as soon as we can, so that we can have a meaningful dialogue on Wednesday, so that we're not asking questions from the floor Wednesday night, thus perhaps engendering another meeting.
Thank you, sir. Senior moment here. I'll think of it sometime later on. But I think that everybody needs to remember that if you have suggestions, bring them with you on Wednesday night. Also, I would also remind people that, you know, we've really had, we didn't have any real specifics and nuts and bolts things, but we've really had an opportunity to present suggestions since March 28th. And nothing came in until last week. So I would remind you, and I'll say the same to you tonight, that I said to you when we finished our meeting the other night. I would like to see us scheduled in our next budget proceedings, not necessarily this year because it's too late, but somewhat of a markup series of meetings, beginning with the next budget session. So keep that in the back of your mind when you set up next year's budget. I'm informed by the city clerk that we cannot do Wednesday, so when can we? No. Today's Monday. You need 24 hours. Never mind. I was going to say, Tracy thought it was Tuesday. Mrs. Williams?
I suspect, I just want to make the comment, as the long-standing member of council, we have gone all the way up to almost July, especially in years where there's a tax issue on the table, because it is so difficult to get, to get all the pieces together. Although I agree with my colleague, Mr. Lynn, that people, if you have a concern or have a question, that it should go to staff as quickly as possible so they can be prepared. I also believe in the, I think you used the word brainstorming, which may be, and it's been the history of how we get out of this and break the deadlock, is for people to come up with innovations as they're thinking, that be also welcomed, because without it, we're not going to get off dead center.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Well spoken. Any other comments? All right, now, Mr. Hare?
I guess, I think back to the days in, from '91 to '97, when we didn't, we stopped having these three and four marathon meetings, because we tasked the city manager and staff.
Mr. Hare, you need to use the microphone, sir.
We tasked the city manager and the staff to bring us a balanced budget without raising taxes. What would it take to balance the budget without raising taxes? And they did. They didn't, we didn't have to tell them to transfer $2 million or $1 million. They brought it to us and told us, here's how we can do it. Now, if we didn't want to do that, we could decide, but they told us how to balance the budget. And I'd like to see us get back to that, where the staff is telling us, here's how you can balance a budget without tax increases. And then we can decide if we like what they say or they don't like what they say.
Thank you. Mr. Slavin?
In fairness to Mrs. Mitchell and Mr. Koenig, I think they'd like to see the revenue streams increase the way they did from 1991 to 1997. I think it was a lot easier to do that than it is now.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Seeing none, I will now defer to the city clerk for introduction of the ordinance in accordance with section 1-9 of the Dover Code. Madam Clerk?
Proposed ordinance number 2014-17, FY 2014, 15, City of Dover Budget Ordinance. This constipated.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So we will remind everyone that there will be a special meeting of city council on Wednesday night at 6:30 in council chambers to discuss the budget for the next budget season. Item number 13 on the agenda this evening is the first reading of the proposed ordinance that was accomplished during the council meeting of May 27, 2014. Copies of the proposed ordinances are available at the entrance to council chamber. First, I'll entertain a motion to consider the final reading by title only, which is simply to allow the waiving of the readings. Separate motions will be necessary for the adoption, pleasure of council.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Hutchison, second by Mrs. Williams. Any question on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. First, we have ordinance 2014-09, amending Chapter 50, Floods, Chapter 22, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 3, Building Code, Section 22-61, and Appendix F, Fees and Fines. Mrs. Townsend?
Thank you. This is an update to the city's floodplain regulations. This is required by FEMA in order for the city to be compliant with the regulations under the National Flood Insurance Program. The new flood insurance rate maps go into effect July 7th, and we are required to have all of our code amendments in place by that time. So the ordinance that you have before you is a model ordinance developed by a consultant from Denrec that has worked with FEMA to make sure that it is FEMA-approved, and that it works in a coordinated fashion with the city's building code that we've adopted, the International Code Council codes. So with that, I would take any questions.
Any questions? Mrs. Williams?
Do we or do we not live in an insurable floodplain?
Right now, we're in the National Flood Insurance Program, so yes, people can get flood insurance. If we did not adopt this, then that would be in jeopardy.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? All right. Need a motion to accept the pleasure of council. Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mr. Dixon, seconds. Any questions on the motion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Persa?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Next, we have ordinance 2014-10, the FY 2014 Budget Amendment. Mrs. Mitchell?
Yes, this is the budget amendment that you had in your packet of, I think we had the first reading two weeks ago, that amends the benefits for healthcare accounting, amends some of our projects, and also puts in, trying to think what the other thing was. I can't remember off the top of my head what the.
Men's revenues.
Men's revenues, yes. For fiscal '14.
Thank you, Mrs. Mitchell. Any questions, staff? Pleasure of council.
Move the adoption.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Slavin, second by Mr. Persa the second. I'm sorry. Mr. Lynn, I'm sorry. Thank you. Sean. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Persa?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Next, this ordinance 2014-14, amending Appendix D, the Downtown Dover Business Improvement District, Article 3, Establishment of the DDBID, Section 3-G geographic boundaries, and Section 5, the Management Company. Call him, Mrs. Townsend.
Did you say me?
Yep.
Okay. All right, this is an amendment to the ordinance that governs our business improvement district, and it does two things. It names the Downtown Dover Partnership as the Management Company under the state statute and the city ordinance to administer the bid tax, and it changes the requirement that a majority of members of the Board of Directors of the Management Company be commercial property owners in the downtown bid district. It still requires that there would be five property, commercial property owners on the Board of Directors. It just does not require a majority of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Townsend. Mrs. Williams?
Mrs. Townsend, total members are 14?
I believe right now, it's, it might be 21 now.
21?
Yeah, but some of those are, there are three that are designated that are city council, and then the city manager, the city planner, and then there are some state, the two state legislators, a senator, representative, and two, or three other state appointments. So over 10 of them are spoken for by positions held in government office.
And, and this would mean that five, it would limit, I'm sorry, there's a minimum of five business owners?
Commercial property owners.
Commercial property owners, but this changes what?
The main thing it does is it brings us into compliance with the state statute for the bid, for the bid ordinance.
Yes, I know that, but with the voting, what does it do about the voting? I want to, I want to get.
The voting on the DDP?
Yeah.
It doesn't change anything. There's two pieces of this. They are also working on some, a bylaw, actually, they just approved a bylaw change that would also require that the Downtown Dover Partnership Board of Directors have five commercial property owners on the Board of Directors, or designees, as is permitted under the state statute and the proposed ordinance.
And this, and it would be a simple majority, then, is what I'm saying.
Yes. Oh, yes, voting is simple majority.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Any other questions, members of council? Pleasure of council.
Move adoption of the ordinance, Mr. President?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Anderson, second by Mr. Lynn, adoption of the ordinance. Any questions on the motion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Persa?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Yes. Carries unanimously. We're now down to council member announcements. Council members that have announcements this evening. Mr. Slavin?
Just wanted to remind everyone of the upcoming African-American Festival being held on Legislative Mall on June the 28th. Is that correct? June 28th.
Could all be undoubtedly marked on our hit foreheads.
Please join us.
Mr. Lynn?
All.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, Tim, go ahead.
I'm the.
You're done. Go ahead.
I just want to remind the people viewing at home that a budget hearing has been scheduled for Wednesday. Is it at 6:00 p.m.?
6:30.
6:30 p.m. here in this chamber. It's imperative that viewers from home, please come out to have your voices heard at the budget hearing. I think one of the concerns voiced certainly by Mr. Persa this evening was that people need to understand and digest and have time to work on this, and we want you to come out. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to inform everyone that at 6:00 p.m. tomorrow at Mount Sinai A&amp;E Church, which is 101 North Queen Street, is a mayoral candidate's forum, and people should come and listen, and as well as vote in the election for the person of their choice on June 17th at the Elks Lodge from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Took the words out of my mouth. I was going to remind anybody since, everyone, since there is not a televised council session we're doing now in the election. Keep that date in mind, April, or June 17th at the Elks Lodge between 8:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. Oh, 8:00, I'm sorry, Tracy reminded me, 8 to 8. 7:00 a.m., let's make it correct, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Dover Elks Lodge, and that's on Salzburg Road on June 17th.
Could you say that again faster?
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. All right, we have an executive session, so we will need to have a motion adjourned as a special executive session.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Williams, second by Mr. Lynn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. We are adjourned in the executive session. We're satisfied, I'm sorry.